What the yes and no vote means, raise your hand for the love of all this town. Raise your hand, we'll go over it. I don't care if you go over it a thousand times, we'll go over it until everybody understands what it means.
Thank you.
Uh, hang on, I got my list going. I got laws in the shuffleboard.
Scott.
Oh yeah, also, I'm a thousand election committee, he was gonna come up there and state a few rules. But yeah, that's working out of this one.
That's all right, hold your time. So, if you want, you can have a card or paper with you to remind you how to vote when you go into the room. That is allowed. It is not allowed to distribute those inside of this building. If you want to distribute those, there are cones marked off over there by the road where you can stand over there and distribute for campaigning. So, there will be none of that inside of here. And nowhere any election material that has to do with this election inside of this building. Thank you.
There is also a sample of the made-up ballot that you can take out on this bulletin.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nancy. No, I should, I'm very, uh...
They're in the front row of the class. Are they recording TV?
Hi. Hello, I'm Nancy Yates, I'm co-chair of the newly-formed, five-member town meeting.
Nancy, can you toss into the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
I am the co-chair of the newly-formed Wind Hall House Assembly, five member house. Saying in support today of expanding the select board as a town, hard in our town, to five seats. Like many of you, I was at the first vote, where it passed decisively with a forty-seven to twenty-seven vote. It was a free and fair vote with no irregularities. I was there when our town leader stood up in front of us and said that they would work with whatever the outcome was. Morris said that as well. And then almost immediately after the vote did not go their way, they used a legal statute to call for this re-vote. Yes, this re-vote is legal, but it doesn't make it right. The reason given was that not enough of our town had a chance to weigh in on this important matter, and they want a re-vote. The town budget was also voted on that day, another important matter, but no one called for a re-vote on that because it didn't challenge the power. I'm sure many of us could think of elections who would also like to see a re-vote for with more people engaged, but voting doesn't work that way. Those who are most engaged show up and have their voice heard. That's what happened on town meeting day. Just keep in mind that most people who advocate for the status quo to keep things as they are are those who want to protect their power, keep progress from happening, fear what change of voting might be voiced in my opinion. They battled the loophole, sent out postcards, put up lawn signs, which I'm not complaining for those, maybe taxpayers, even tried to make today's ballot as confusing as possible. So, let's be clear. Today, your no votes tell those who brought this petition that a re-vote should never have happened, that it's an overreach, that it disempowers chances of those who already voted. It says that your vote does not matter. So, your no vote today says that showing up, the democratic process, and moving the town forward still matter. Please tell those who brought this petition, no with your no vote today. Thank you.
I would like to clarify just one thing, let me clarify.
Can you speak up, please?
Sorry. I'd like to clarify one thing, only just so that you all understand. The loophole is not a loophole. In the state of Vermont, if any of you are here, this should go online. This is a Vermont moderator's handbook. This is what governs me and how I run a town meeting in the state of Vermont. In every page of this book, it's the state that asks for every possible chance to be given. So, every voter has a chance to have their voice said. It's not a loophole, it is a state law. I agree, it's not necessarily right, hundred percent, but it is a loophole, it is actually a state law. So, yes, people use it all the time, but if you read through this book, there are many, many examples of the state telling us. But the state gives me the power to not accept a call of question. If it says, "Raven here," if I feel or I see that there are many more people in the room that want to speak on a topic, I can deny a call of question because the state wants it to be that as many of you can be heard as possible. On a state level, I think you should go in. And if you can get that part straightened out, if you can do something about the taxes and the arm and all the other things, you're handling it. You have your hand up.
You said exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, perfect, all along with that, we'll move along now. Emily, you have your hand up.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was not here for the discussion that I had earlier. Um, I actually am speaking at sort of a distance from the issue because I don't know who brought up the extension board. I don't know who might run for those seats, I am simply talking to the faculty. Um, I have huge appreciation for the board and the work that you do and have done. Um, I work for a nonprofit that has a fairly large board from sixteen to twenty. It's a very, uh, it's a large nonprofit region, it's a very functional board. We have a lot of continuity on that board, and at the same time, we make a lot of effort to bring in new voices consistently. And we really value that, that strengthens the institution, it makes the continuity of the institution really strong. So, when somebody approached me on the steps of the post office to say, "Will you vote on the silent petition to expand to five members?" I thought, "That's no brainer" because our town, in my perception, my microblog, has expanded. And I really, really appreciate continuity. I actually don't want to see a situation where people are talking about hurt limits or talking about, uh, or running against people who are doing their job very well. So, for me to add two seats to the board gives the opportunity for some new voices at the same time, but it gives the opportunity for us to benefit from partnering. And, um, my other point is that I'm here to contribute to the board, they're teenagers and, um, my, one of my biggest concerns is that this remains this area and this town remains a place where my parents want to stay or maybe they go and want to come back. So, I think that it's really important that we make opportunities for the next generation of leaders to, uh, to learn from your experience by having learned experience of governance with, um, and not, uh, and having that continuity, but also the opportunity for the next generation to learn. So, that, that's my, my perception. I'm so grateful for the work that we do, I hope they continue to do it, and, um, but I am in a vote for this expansion, whatever.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Philmore, I've been a resident of Wind Hall for ten years. Um, I took the opportunity to do some data research on voter turnout at town meetings.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Do you want to? This is not a solid one.
Good morning, my name is Kristen. I've been a resident of Wind Hall since 2016. Um, with this information, um, I am willing, I will share that I wanted to vote no to rescind the decision of voters at, on Article Three at town meeting on March fourth. I wasn't attendance at that meeting. It was a solidly decided vote. Um, I don't understand the reasoning behind a request for rescinding that vote. Um, so I did some research on voter turnout over the last ten years at town meeting. So, in 2025, at our March fourth meeting, there were seven percent of the voters who turned out at town meeting and were checked off. Of that seven percent, seventy-four, probably, actually voted for ballot. Seventy?
Seventy-one was voided because it said it wasn't met.
Sure. So, um, my feeling is that it is not a close vote. It was forty-seven to, what, twenty-seven? Checked the vote on the minutes, forty-seven to twenty-seven, in vote of expanding to five members. That's sixty-three percent of the voters. In my opinion, it is important to honor that vote. I also echo Emily's sentiments, which she said graciously about hearing new voices and honoring the people who currently serve our town. I would then vote no to uphold the decision and have five seats on this platform. Thank you.
Right there, uh, may we be a lot, um, did my appreciation help for the coffee, Ed? Thank you, Trevor.
Just trying to save it.
That's much more. Al, you have your hand up.
Um, so, I would just like to remind everyone that for a three-person board, nobody can get together not in a public meeting and talk about things. For the five-person board, you do have, it is legal for two of them to get together and discuss things that are not in an open meeting. Right now, everything needs to be recorded in a public room so that everybody can attend it. Five people, with five people, two of them can get together and discuss things, another two can get together and discuss things. Decisions are made before, before board meeting, before any of us get a chance to say anything.
Are you saying?
Oh, oh, one person in the board is saying, "You cannot speak."
I will plant down hard on that because I specifically went over these rules at the beginning. Continue, Al.
So, I guess if you guys are okay with that, and I'm not saying that it's necessarily going to happen with five, I'm just saying that legally, you are able to do that when you have a five-person board or a seven-person board or whatever. But with three, you can't do that legally. Um, the other thing, I, and I'm just, as uses the treasurer, I pay off bills and there were no election signs made or paid for by the county.
Emily, you have your fifth hand up.
I didn't understand the first part of this.
She didn't?
I didn't hear the first part of it.
So, the law says.
Can you repeat the question beginning here back there, I'm sorry, Scott.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Can you repeat the question before you answer the question?
She did not understand the first part of Al's thing. So, under, under, if Al, you want to clarify because I'm not sure people understand that little thing about forms on boards.
So, with open meeting law, you cannot, with the three of them, two of them cannot discuss town business that is not in an open and more in public meeting, and it now actually has to be recorded as well. With five people or seven, or however many you can get, it's, you can get the non-majority. So, with five, you can get two people together to discuss things not in open meeting law, behind closed doors, or that sort of thing. They, correction, they can't, they cannot vote, but they can have the discussion and the rest of the public is how triggered they are.
Because that, the, the, the law says you have to have a form, right? So, on a three-person board, it's two, on a five, it's three. That's kind of what's getting at us, that you would need to have those two people get together to discuss something without anybody else knowing or being involved. Obviously, no decisions can be made. We would have to still come to a select board meeting for any decision. That's what he's trying to basically say. Under a three-person board, nobody can get together and discuss anything. Because it was made a form, which would then make it a new one. I'm trying, I'm trying to really.
Yeah, I understand.
Oh, and I'll keep talking until we've gotten to the end of say, "Okay, I'm trying to get here," or "I don't want to..." Next, you have your.
Um, so, I'll turn around. What I'm saying is, if no decisions can be made for these discussions, then why is it something that was even brought up today? If decisions can't be made by private discussions between two people if the select board is extended and discussing amongst themselves, why is that even brought up today?
To, as, as an example of law, Al's, his, his opinion on why he can agree with a five-man board is the same as everybody else, that's allowed to speak their opinion on why they can agree with a five-man board. That's Al's opinion, and it is fact that that is the way the state, the state law is run.
I would just like to say, this is not democracy, even if it says so in your loophole thing, you can call a re-vote here.
You can, you can stop there. You can say, "Stupid."
This is not giving a vote from the people!
Getting a vote from the people.
You already have a vote from the people!
Seven people out of eight hundred and seventy, first one way off, sir. Your duty is to.
Why, I'll be the speaker.
I'll watch you out. I scored it out.
Uplift! Out of the march. All right, all right, boy, now, this, this is exactly what I don't want to say. And I am going to calm down, and Eric provides me that I should re-aspirate the situation. The state of Vermont tells me if I have a disruptive member, that it needs a process of a meeting, I am allowed to have them removed or asked to leave because we will conduct this meeting promptly. Like adults, and I can see everybody here is. I'm not, I am not moved for it, I am not moved to be anybody's friend today, I'm not moved to be friends. And I'm just not going to have it. This is a meeting, a special town meeting. All I ask is you conduct yourselves right adults, and everybody is right on their opinion, period. And if it continues, I'll have the entire room by the end of the day.
Scott, I'm sorry, we can't hear you because there's so much on the ground, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, I'm trying to help you, but I just want to tell you that, I'm sorry.
I have to be careful about how high I turn the volume on because it's echoing the building and it causes horrendous feedback. But I'll give it a shot. Is that any better?
Yes.
Okay. Now, back to our regularly scheduled program. Kristen, you have your hand up, I have you on my list again. Anybody else that wanted to speak, get your hands up, so I can interrupt now before my mind goes somewhere else. Got you, Jan. Yeah?
First, I'd like to say thank you to Scotty for conducting our meeting today, it's not an easy position to be in. Second, I would like to say I like to say to you and Al's community, and I believe that if two people meet outside of the select board meetings, they are not a free people to make a majority of the vote. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Dan.
Can you hear me?
No.
Yeah, please, anybody that wants to speak and feels like they might not be heard, please come on. Like I said, this is not my silver, common debate, even though I wish for hella lots. I wish for a square that said, "Can't man."
I'm Jan Hurley, I've lived in Wind Hall since 2016. I was at town meeting, I participated in the board discussion and voted. Um, and as to Al's, um, concern about two people outside, two select board members talking outside of the select board meetings to discuss town business, if people are concerned about that, I, I don't happen to be one. It's not like they are making any decisions on behalf of the town. But if people are concerned about that, a select board could adopt tools that said, "No select board members should, shall be talking about town business outside of town." It's simple. I still think that it's important to broaden our select board to be more representative of a broader community, that we, of the broader community that we have in town.
I heard it. Um, hi, my name is Jeff Gates. Uh, I too, uh, I too agree. The guy, you guys got it? I'm Jeff Gates, I too agree that, uh, we do need to expand the select board. I think they do a great job, but they're not appropriate. And some of the materials I was going to show, that I can't show, is to reinforce the numbers that I've done some research since the last meeting. So, if you bear with me, I'll be really quick. I'm here today to give you my reasons for a holding of first vote, the Democratic vote, that expanded the select board from three to five people, and why we should vote no on Article Three. Respectfully, in my opinion, the three-town select board does not function as well as it could. One reason mentioned at the last town meeting for not expanding the board, is that a five-person board is too many people and they won't get along. I disagree. I've been on Wind Hall Planning Commission for over three years. The Planning Commission has changed a lot since Northell's passing. In no time, the WPC has expanded to an eight-person board. Tammy's the president, I'm vice president, between the other members, Cliff, Hannah, Cheyenne, Peter, Phil, and Lucia, we are the dynamic group. We do not fight, we get along because we're working together in one direction, just like the select board does for the best of Wind Hall. That's simple. You can have what's called a parking lot meeting, where you're not talking outside of the meeting, but it doesn't mean anything until you get to a voting apparatus, which is a select board or planning commission meeting. People should put all the time that's been freedom of expression that we're allowed to have in this country. To be transparent, if the select board does remain a five-person board, I'm running for one of those two seats. I'll step down from the WPC and focus on guiding the select board towards better financial management. And when I join the select board, one of the things I'll really work hard on is to keep your taxes low. I said before, in my opinion, the town finances could be managed better by the select board. Here are three hard-earned tax dollars reasons where why we should do that change. Number one, the select board spent two years creating a new town website at the cost of over eleven thousand dollars paid to a web company called Revise. And even Bill Schwartz has said at select board meeting when I was there, "It doesn't work well." It needs to rebuild, and that's going to cost the town even more money than the eleven thousand dollars. Number two, the select board approved an annual contract with GovOS back in September, September twenty-four, to manage the short-term rental traffic in Wind Hall long before the ordinance is going to launch this July. The GovOS fee is twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars that we as town members have been paying since September. That's over nineteen thousand dollars of taxpayers' money that's gone. I'm not going to get it back unless somebody negotiates that. Number three, the select board paid for architect renderings for the proposed Wind Hall Fire Police Emergency Services building. The architect plans aren't accurate, they do not adhere to state border order regulations. The Goldstone Architect paid over twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars of our money for inaccurate and currently unusable designs. But it doesn't stop there. The select board is already going to spend more of your tax dollars getting cost estimates from firms to look at the flood zone river corridor site. Thank you. It's costing more of your tax dollars collectively, which I have on a sign, that's over fifty-seven thousand dollars of wasted or mismanaged tax money, yours and my tax money. I think we can do better. I think by expanding the board, you get that kind of exposure. To be clear, I'm not the same thing that this town board wants. I want a strong fire rescue police department and a building to house all three. That would be a top priority for this year. That's the kind of way we should be spending our money. I'd also change that makeshift gun range out of Kendall Farm Road. Right now, it's an accident waiting to happen with ATV and motocross jumps at a direct ninety-three angle from the shooting pits. Just one of those, and we'd be in a lot of trouble. That's my ability, and it's a no-brainer, I have safety reasons to change that. It can only help us.
Yeah, we got it.
Into the mic, sorry, sorry. The next point and my last point is the one where we have to be there. The entire community, all of you should know that there is one project I do not agree with, which is the town wastewater project. The town wastewater project that is being proposed is a waste of money. The town wastewater requires pumping water four miles uphill to the Stratton Water Treatment Plant. That's four miles of pump, pipe uphill, the cost of the pipe, the cost of the pumping station, and the continued maintenance and the continued cost of that pumping station. But you still got to hook it all together between Wind Hall and Stratton. And we have more to talk about, the sewers, the drains, and repaving the town center. If it's a bond project, it'll cost taxpayers money for decades to come. We don't need it. And at the very least, I ask that if it is proposed and we don't expand the board for some reason, that you go to Vermont Twenty-four BSA Chapter Fifty-Nine, that Vermont Twenty-four BSA T C nine one.
Select Board.
Okay, which states that any person on the select board with financial interest needs to step aside and recuse themselves from anticipating in the way on a town project.
I am a moderator, not the board, not the section of people on the board. We're done, you know, we're out of the act, I think you're way over, I think you almost had.
And then when I got to there, when I got interrupted.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess, you know. Right now! Right now, I will say this as moderator, I've been moderator for the town for seventeen years. In the last five years, I get up here every, not here at the school, but I'll get up and we get to the town portion side. I will beg and plead somebody to make a comment on the budget. A question, a comment, anything, anything. I have yet in five years to see a hand questioning the budget. And I'm not saying that maybe there is things that can be cut in there, but I got to be honest with you, from a moderator's standpoint, it's, doesn't really seem like y'all are too concerned about the budget. But I do agree, there's always facts that can be corrected, hundred percent.
Can we just vote?
Oh, oh! I swear to God! You do not follow my directions, which apparently you people seem to don't understand. As the moderator, I am the one that runs this meeting, period. So, when somebody says something and then you all decide to get out of class or do whatever else, I'm going to have a fit, and I'm going to fit, because I do think we're getting close to that point. If you could just allow a votes that have not spoken before to speak. I see Cliff Demarest's hand up in the back over there, which I'm sure you can't see from this side of the room because he's clear in the back in the corner. I would like to give votes that have not spoken a chance to speak. And then, if you want to call the question and there's nobody else, if there's not a plethora of folks that want to get their opinion in, we will call the question. The other thing is, is that, I guess we've forgotten that you can't just blurt out from the floor. You raise your hand, you're recognized, you have the floor. Not dealing with this, people, my God, you're adults, please start acting now.
I'm going to say this one more time, there is no election material allowed inside of here. So, the next person that has it will be asked to leave.
Is there any other question or comments, or do we move the question? Oh, I'm sorry, Bill did ask me, oh, do you want Audrey to go first?
Sure.
Audrey, go ahead, then Bill. Well, I guess Bill wanted the last, go ahead, you have spoken.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a few things that seem to have come up, and I think it's a misunderstanding, I mean, the point, so whether or not it's a select board, because I've been on the select board for sixteen years, by the way, planning before that, short-stem and fire department, I appreciate everything. The, you know, when, when, when Al brought up the fact that two people had a name, and if we're a five-person board, and two people meet outside of a town meeting, that officially an open meeting, which is very important in our state right now, well, open meetings not only have to be recorded, they have to be up on your website, people are going to be able to see them. Open meeting law is very important, yeah, I think the transparency of it is very important, and it should be important to everybody here. So the thing that happens, you're not talking about control, well, with a five-person board, yeah, two people can discuss the matter outside of an open meeting on their own, and then one of those people can, and you can go through the way I asked, but one of those people can then go and talk with the third person outside of open meeting law. The decision, in effect, is made outside of open meeting law. Then they haven't actually voted at a meeting, let them go to a meeting, but it's already been made, because they've been talking about, we, I, Al, cannot do that at all. You're not allowed to have a discussion, me and Stuart, me and Julie, I mean, we can talk about weather, we can talk about life, you can't talk about town business. Town business has to be in front of the town, open meeting. So I'm extremely.
Listen, listen, don't you hear the whispering, you think you're being quiet, but you're not. It echoes in here ungodly, I'm even having a hard time here, Bill, believe it or not.
So, so it's been, I'll talk louder, so there's been a lot of discussions about, like, oh, control the board, control that, you know, so sixteen years I've been on the board, I think Julie's been about six or eight, six years, you know, so how did Julie get on the board, first of all, Julie got on the board, I'm getting quick. Julie got on the board because she was interested in participating in our government, like some people are expressing, but haven't done anything about. In fact, Jeff Gates decided not to run this year. Why can he not run? Because he would have been running against Julie, and it's about control of our town. So he specifically was, said, I don't want a petition, I thought I was running against the system.
Yeah, I see what you're hearing.
I'm sorry, so, so the point is, point again, is that five-person board allows for business to be taken care of outside of our open meeting law, I'm extremely adverse to that, and would appreciate a vote, and say, hey, we appreciate everything you've done, and to Jeff's point, anything that does with funding, we're required to get RFPs, we're required to get three, at least, people giving us proposals, and then nothing gets spent without going to humans of town. So that's just another disingenuous provision, I'm going to say. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I know, I was going to say, exactly what you were going to say.
So with all due respect, as everyone knows, all town business is dangerous, but with all due respect, and thank you so much, Mr. Schwartz, with all due respect, I believe there was a motion on the floor, so as a point of order, if there were six people with their hands raised, we need to move with a motion and take a voice vote.
Give me, give me a motion to get on to the voting.
My motion.
Give me, I'm all in favor. Make it happen. Stand up, go on, move. Get your line, run it down.
Can we have you take your microphones off that table?
Okay.
And we're not, they're the only, the only people who work here.
Yeah.
But it's microphones, thank you.
...
So Article 3 stands as voted at March 4th. So we're going to say five persons.